Okay, so two minutes each. Begin with Siri.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shari O'Connor-Barroso and I'm running for the Lowell School Committee. I've been asked by various parents in the community to run for a chair at the table. I'd like to help support the superintendent and the other supervisors, being the special ed director, and also the teachers, and I would like to give a voice to the parents and the children in our community. I speak Portuguese. My family is Latino. I am of Irish descent. And I understand what's going on in the community in regards to communication and where we need to improve it. I'd like to help that communication. I'd like to look at recess and help to have that across the board be equal from each school to the other. Help to oversee the high school project. My daughter will be going into high school. I have four children, two have autism and special needs. So I've been down in the ditches and understand the process for education plans and the hardship that families face. I'd like to see after-school and before-school childcare offered consistently from each school so that the parents that work, which are many, are able to do so without struggling and worrying about what they're going to do with their child on a day-to-day basis while school. Basically, increase that communication in all languages across the board. We have a great city. We have so many different and diverse cultures. And I'd like to help support the superintendent and the schools to continue to increase the communication, like I've already said, across the board in all languages. And make our schools as great as they can be because we live in Lowell. And Lowell's a great city and we should have great schools. Every child should be thriving irregardless of their background. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote on November 5th.
Hillary May Clark?
Hello, my name is Hillary Clark and I am a candidate for school committee. My daughter is in 5th grade in the Daly School. And I am a parent of a Lowell Public Schools student. I work at the university in human resources. I live downtown. I am on the Board and Associate Board of Project Learn, which is a nonprofit education group here in the city that supports our Lowell Public Schools. And I also am a small business owner. My family and I have invested here in the city of Lowell. And I believe that I have some skills that I can offer the city in terms of being able to collaborate and build relationships as a school committee member between the superintendent, the city council, and my fellow committee members. Some of the things that I think are important that I would work hard for is strong financial oversight. Our school budget, it is the responsibility of the school committee to oversee and ensure that there are strong controls in place financially to ensure that we stay in budget and hold folks accountable. I also believe that we should be educating all of our students equitably, meaning that the quality of all of our schools should be top-performing so that every student in the city has an opportunity to go to a school and receive great quality education. I also believe that we can improve our communication and family engagement. We need to do that by creating a welcome environment for all of our families and for our students. And I think that I have some skills that I can offer to help make these things happen and to work collaboratively with the folks at the school committee and within the superintendent and schools. Thank you for your vote on November 5th.
Andrea DeCorto?
Good evening. I'm Andy DeCorto, running for reelection for my third term. I'm a retired music teacher from the high school. After 18 years, I retired and I'd said, "What better place for me to go than to be on the school committee and still be working for the kids and with the kids?" As it's been commonly seen, I was a strong supporter for the previous superintendent and I am a strong supporter of the current one, who I think will be doing a fabulous job for the city and for our kids of the whole district. I'm also a supporter of fine arts. Oftentimes, fine arts gets sent off to the side or used as a pawn, as it were, and shrugged off. And I believe that that is just a wrong approach. I think fine arts in general provide a great outlet for so many of our kids going forward. I've also been working very hard over the last three years to try to acquire more classroom space. The city is in desperate need of space. And so I have been working with various building owners and so forth. And it's getting closer but still needs some work. Also, as you know, I was a supporter of the Quali site. However, the city voted last term and it's going to stay downtown. And I want it to be the best downtown high school in the entire state. In fact, the whole northeast, it would be even better. From what I understand, it is going to be a fabulous building and I want to see this project through and make sure that we do have the best for our kids. I also want to support all of our teachers and administrators who do a fantastic job in a very difficult situation around here. We have a great staff and so I will appreciate your vote on November 5th, Andy DeCorto. Thank you.
Michael Dillon?
Hi, my name's Mike Dillon Jr. I'm a first-time candidate. I'm 36 years old. I grew up in Lowell in the Highlands and I'm raising my own family there now. I'm a graduate of the class of 2002 at Lowell High School and 2007 at Bridgewater State. I earned a phys ed degree there. After college, I taught phys ed and adaptive physical education in Citewood, Massachusetts. After that time, I got onto the Lowell Fire Department and moved back to the city. Since then, I've been coaching wrestling at the high school and on the youth level in the city. I have a wife, a stepdaughter, a one-year-old, and another baby on the way. And I think my background in education, also the fact that me and my wife are small business owners. We work with the adaptive population at our gymnastics facility. So I have insights into special education. But my real focus is going to be maintenance. We need to attack our maintenance system. We need to think outside the box a little bit and do more than we're doing now. I'm going to bring hard work and hopefully some energy to the committee if elected. So I appreciate it if you'd give me a vote on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Jacqueline Doherty?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jackie Doherty. I'm running for reelection to the Lowell School Committee. Why? Because I think that high-quality public education is the most important thing we can do for the future of our city and our communities. My passion for good public schools started long before I ever ran for school committee. I was involved in the Citywide Parent Council as a leader for five years before I decided to run for school committee. I have been a member of your school board for 12 years. In that time, I believe I've been an outspoken advocate for our children and from the perspective of a parent, because that's really how I first came to get involved with the schools. But I also am an educator. I taught for 11 years at UMass Lowell and Daniel Webster College. I also volunteered for seven years, about an hour a week in our public schools when my children were younger. Both my children graduated from Lowell High School and went on to college and got a great education. But I understand that the schools are not providing the best education for all our students. And that's why I feel my voice and my advocacy continues to be important. We need to raise the boats on all our schools and get all of them at high-performing levels. My interest with keeping the adults accountable in the system and especially where we have a new superintendent and leadership team. I'm very excited about the work they're doing. But I want to be able to be on board and have a voice and a vote to continue to make sure we're doing our absolute best to provide the best public schools we can for our city. We are a great city. I believe the diversity of our student population is one of our greatest strengths. And I want to continue to, as I said, put my voice behind raising the academic accomplishments of all our students. Again, my name is Jackie Doherty and I'd appreciate one of your six votes for Lowell School Committee. Thank you.
Well, we will turn the floor over to our questioners. First, I have Nancy Pina. You may start with your question and the first question direct to Siri.
Thank you. So my question is, is the district doing enough to engage, support, and recognize our diverse student population through hiring, curriculum, and other activities or initiatives?
We definitely can do more. I think that's reflected in our new superintendent that we just brought on board and also our special ed director. There definitely needs to be changes made. I think we have great teachers and they need that support. But we definitely need the diversity to be able to communicate better with the parents and carry home the message. And that's going to be getting the message, the communications out through different ways and different avenues on paper, through emails, through phone. And in hiring, we need to reflect the population of our children in the population of our powers and our teachers. Because seeing, the children seeing their teachers, they tend to strive better. And it's a proven fact of that, that if a child of color is seeing a teacher of color, a power of color, they tend to succeed better. And this happens in the lower grades. It starts then. So I definitely think we can do more and we're heading in that direction. Thank you.
Hillary May, may I remind that you only have one minute to answer, so you may want to squeeze a little faster.
Sure. I agree with Shari. I think that we can do better. I think we are headed in the right direction. But diversity is important at all levels within our administration and school staff and teachers and paraprofessionals. I think that we can do a better job of creating a welcoming environment for families to be supporting their students and providing support to the schools in a way that, by educating, by reaching out and providing information about how families can be engaged and support their student and their learning. I think that that will provide opportunity for folks to be brought into the schools in a way that feels welcoming and offer them an opportunity to work together for student success. Thank you.
Andrea?
Well, I believe that the new administration in the city is doing an outstanding job at addressing the diversity issue that we've had for some time. And so I want to give his administration as much of a chance to pursue more people of diversity and bring them back, bring them into the city. Our current staff, albeit mostly white people, and that's understandable from history. But I think our staff does a really, really great job. I spent a lot of time with a couple of other school committee members, Bob Hoey and Dominic Lay. We went to visit a lot of schools just to say thank you to our teachers. And they were doing such a fantastic job. They're happy to work with our population, which is a very difficult one to deal with. But they're doing a great job. And I support them and support the superintendent. Thank you.
Michael?
I think when you're looking at the issue of diversity, we have to look at it big picture and look at it long-term. And because we are such a diverse city, that if we are doing our job to educate our kids and educate every generation well, and we also value hiring people from Lowell and people from within the system, then I think we can't help but have a diverse workforce coming back here to work for us. So we need to keep doing our job there and educating every kid equally. And I'd also be interested to look into working with Middlesex or U-Lol on getting our minority population interested in teaching. Thank you.
Jacqueline?
Yes, actually, I want to address a couple of areas. When you talk about engagement, family engagement, children engaged in their schools, I think that diversity is a key part of it. But also that welcoming sense that families know we want them at the table and they have a right and a duty to be there. So this new system we're going to be doing with the new superintendent and his team around school site budgeting, where parents are going to be part of the decision-makers regarding how funds are going to be allocated at each school. I actually had a motion on just a while ago asking for professional development for those parents so they can get some understanding about how the budget works and be able to make really good decisions. The other thing, and I think Mike mentioned it when he talked about the pipeline that we have with our own students. I had a motion about really getting kids involved in education. We reinstated the education club at the high school with Middlesex Community College. We're working with our parents to help them get their bachelor's degrees so they can become teachers. So it's really a multifaceted approach. And I think that working together all those areas, we'll see continued improvement. Thank you.
Now we will go to question number two. Second questioner I have is Gloria Politis.
I think we're starting with Hillary. In what ways, for instance, church, clubs, service organizations, have you been personally involved in service to the community?
Sure. So for the last few years, I've been on the Board of Project Learn and also the Associate Board. When I joined the Board of Project Learn, they added on an Associate Board. And I am, in fact, the liaison between the two. It's a role that I serve to help facilitate communication and collaboration, which is ultimately providing funding for programs within the public schools. So that's Project Learn's work. And we were hard to raise money by grants and donations to support things like Girls Who Code in the Middle Schools, the book nooks that are around the city where children can come and take free books. I have participated the last three years in Book Fest, which was most recently held in Kerouac Park, to welcome. And there were about 700 people who came through and I worked the welcome desk to welcome 700 people into that event. And it was really wonderful.
Andrea?
I have been a member of the current school committee for four years and been very involved with getting things done from that aspect. But I've also been the choir director at St. Margaret in the Highlands, a job that I've had for probably around 30 years, close to that. It's a volunteer position and I just have such a great time with those people and trying to engage our younger parishioners to come in and join the group. So we do a lot of that outreach programs. But in terms of being a member of other boards, I am not a member of other boards. And I do have my full days dealing with the school committee and Mike Wire. So, thank you.
Michael?
Well, my profession is as a firefighter in Lowell. So I'm serving the community every day that I go to work. And before that, I was teaching. I've always sort of worked in the industry of public service, whether I was as a lifeguard or teaching swimming or now I'll teach your firefighter. And through my business, me and my wife own a gymnastics facility. We do a lot of community service. I mentioned before that we work with the special ed population often. We're a location for the Special Olympics, so we do a lot of cool things there. And I've also been working with Lowell Wrestling, either at the high school or now I work with Lowell Youth Wrestling, which is a free program for kids in Lowell. They don't have to pay a thing. All they have to do is show up. So we do a great job with that. Thank you.
Jacqueline?
Thank you. Well, aside from the work I've done on the Lowell School Committee, which is 12 years on the Board, I was involved as a volunteer at the Greater Lowell YMCA in the nursery preschool program. I also was on the Nonprofit Alliance, which was a community group that UML sponsored at the time. I don't know if it's still in existence, but I served on that Board for years as well as the City Manager's Anti-Gang Task Force. And for a number of years, I was involved at the state level with the Mass Association of School Committees as Chair of the Advocacy Subcommittee. And then I got involved as Chair of the Urban School Districts Committee. So a lot of it has been around the youth and education services. Thank you.
All right, third questioner I have, Vissal Chin from CMA. And your question will... Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, now I broke my own rule. My bad. We finish at Siri.
Yes, I'm currently a member of Christ Church United, which I'm very proud of. And I'm on the coordinating council, so we help oversee the goings-on in the church. And they're very involved in the community, which is one of the reasons I'm proud to be a part of the community there at the church. And in the past, I've been on the Parent Advisory Council at Community Teamwork, which is a great program. The parents are very involved, just as they can be very involved here in the public school. A lot of what I've done and how I've helped in the community, having children with special needs, is typically with other families. And where I speak Portuguese, but obviously I'm very fluent in English, I've been able to attend different meetings. I've been able to advocate for families that aren't able to have a proper voice in the community. And that's where I feel like I really shine in helping out in the community is lending my actual voice. Thank you.
And now it's time we go for it. And your question directly. Start with Andrea.
Well, Mr. Andre DeCorto, the question would be like this. Do you feel that high-stakes standardized tests like MCAS are essential to determine student achievement and should be used to determine high school graduation? Why or why not?
High-stakes testing is, I believe, the bane of our education system. I don't think high-stakes testing does anything but measure the two areas that they currently test on. And so much effort is put into and time is spent, classroom time is spent, to help our kids pass that test, to the detriment of everything else. I believe strongly that in the near future, the evaluation is going to be that we have not done a good service to our children for several generations because of that test. So going forward, yeah, I would like to see that test disappear permanently. Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I agree with Andy. I believe the classroom time and the time focused on teaching to the test is just not worth the outcome. I believe in having a little bit of foresight, which is tough to do in education. But I'm interested at looking at educating our kids for the first 20 years of their life and not the first 20 years of the way that we grew up. And, sorry, what was the topic? I just totally lost my train of thought. Standardized testing. Yeah, and so in the future, I don't believe that teaching every single child to that standard is going to be valuable for us. I just don't see how we're doing our best for every kid, if that's what's driving our curriculum.
Jackie?
So I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that we have a place for standardized testing. I think without that, prior to that, you had great inflation, people getting pushed through, graduating, and perhaps not having the basic skills they need to succeed, whether in work or if they want to go on to school. Has MCAS solved that? No. It's an imperfect tool, but we do need some system of measurement. It's supposed to be focused around critical thinking skills, math, reading, writing skills. What's happening, and it's starting at the federal government with Massachusetts at the lead. We're looking at the whole child and considering portfolio assessments for children maybe who have special needs or don't test well, looking at the test itself more critically. And I think this is the way we need to go. This is how standardized testing is going to evolve. But at the end of the day, we need some baseline objective tool to measure that our schools are doing a good job. And I don't think it can be just a grade. Thank you.
Siri?
Hi, yes. I don't support the MCAS particularly. We've had standardized testing for a while. I took standardized tests when I was younger. I think it was the Ohio exam. And we can do that and measure where our typically developing children are, who aren't English language learners, who aren't special education, and who are flourishing in the classroom. This test is geared toward how our teachers are doing. Hence, we have double blocks of ELA. We have double blocks of math. Guess what? Maybe we'll throw in science there, the fine arts. And let's forget about cursive, and now our kids are illiterate in our own language of English because they can't read it, as in the Constitution and everything else that was written prior in cursive, which is what everything is supposed to be written in. Let's reduce our recess so our kids are more stressed out and increase their anxiety from just taking the test alone. They already have portfolios done. My daughter, who's 21 years old, they do a portfolio on her. She's nonverbal autistic. Great job, teacher, because you put together this portfolio. Really not happy and do not support it at all. Thank you.
Hillary?
So I think that standardized testing does offer some value, but I think it should be a one-assessment tool used in the view of the whole child. I think as a district, we can and should identify other ways to measure student success. And I think that we can work together to identify what those are based on what our goals as a community are. And so things that would help to round out a child's learning, to prepare them to be a participating community member, to carry on with a future, whether that is college or career. I think it's a matter of working together to identify what other measurements we would like to see as a district, what we would define success is, and build them into how we look at our students and how we measure our students so that the test is no longer the only measurement tool. Thank you.
Now we will, second round of the questions for tonight. We will go to Gloria to start.
Nancy. Yeah, okay, I'm going to start. So the question goes to Michael. So bullying remains a problem in the schools. So what mechanism needs to be in place and enforced to prevent bullying of both staff and students?
It's an interesting topic. I try to have a different view of the best I can on it. I think the most important thing for us is to talk to our kids. I think mental health is a huge concern and it's going to be a huge part of our kids' first 20 years of their life. We need to get them talking. I think kids need to know the difference between the internet and the use of their phone and communication on their phone in real life and how they can use that phone as a tool and they can use the internet to their advantage. As far as bullying goes, I don't think we can get rid of bullying. I think there are going to be mean people always. But what we can do is prepare our kids to handle life and to handle social media and to be able to get through tough times in life. Thank you.
Jackie?
Yes, so I think with bullying, with the whole smartphone, social media, you have seen it just explode. We've always had bullies. I think we always will have bullies. But it's really kind of up the ante in terms of what schools are doing. And I think we've got good policies here in Lowell, but I don't think we're implementing them consistently at each school as best we can. And we have some best practices that we need to be sharing more among schools. But I think our approach, and I agree with this approach, it's more a restorative approach. So you're looking at, A, teaching standby people, you're part of it. If you don't speak out against a bully or get together and say, "That's not cool." Teaching that bullies themselves suffer. Because what the evidence shows is that many people in... people who are in jail today were either bullied or bullies when they were bullied, bullies themselves when they were younger. So it's really like a multi-pronged approach, to look at all parties involved in bullying, and share those best practices, so we do a better job of educating our students about how to deal with bullies. Thank you.
Siri?
I 100% agree with Jackie. She pretty much summed up almost everything that I would like to say in regards to it. Definitely, there's some schools that are doing a really good job, and we have a protocol in place. We definitely need to start in the lower grades, teaching our children to be empathetic, and that also, as Mike has said, needs to happen at home, we need to teach our children. Bullying has been happening since I was little, before, you know, the internet, the internet has just increased it immensely. And that's not excusing it. And the abuser becomes the abuse, the abuser becomes the abuser. It's just, it's a vicious cycle that continues when not addressed. But we need to start young, teaching our children to be empathetic and sympathetic to each other. But also, when bullies are identified, and these children are identified, we need to act, because usually it's been happening for a while. So we need to be proactive, reactive, and try and cover all the bases before tragic things happen. Thank you.
Hillary?
So I also agree with Jackie and Sheri about bullying, but I also believe that we can implement and add to our curriculum, social-emotional learning, pro-social behaviors like mindfulness, compassion, kindness, forgiveness. Those are things that can be taught and increased and practiced, and grow, if they're nurtured. Gratitude. There's opportunities for folks to be educated on how to be better people. All of us can be better people. And we should be teaching our children how, children and staff, how they can add these, have tools to help them work through difficult times, to work with difficult people. These are skills that will be beneficial to them, not only today, but in their life and future, outside of school. And I think that those are, would be additional items I would like to see added as a school committee member.
Andrea?
Well, I think that the Lowell school system has a great protocol in place already to deal with bullies. I think if it was implemented more rigidly, that we could probably do a better job with that. However, I think we have to coordinate with parents and at home. I think at home, there has to be always a conversation going on between a parent and the child to say, "Is there something going on if you see something different about your child?" It's not just a part of growing up, if there are issues that are happening. The school is, has a lot of kids involved, and it's hard to sometimes to zero in on, "Has that child been bullied? Does it look like that child's been bullied?" And so I think that there are, the protocols are there, we just have to enforce them more equitably across the board.
All right. So now we go to Gloria Politis. And your question will start with Mike.
Jackie.
Yeah, Jackie, yep.
Was the school committee right in terminating Superintendent Calafawi?
Was the school committee right in terminating former superintendent?
Absolutely. I was the maker of that motion with Connie Martin, she was my second. And I think that it was absolutely the right thing we needed to do. In fact, as the investigation went on, we found that there was additional problems that we weren't even aware of. But we had, right now, today, we have $4 million. We are on a payment plan with the state of Massachusetts that we need to pay back. There were millions of dollars in bills that had never gotten paid, just a number of problems in terms of our policies regarding procurement, our policies regarding personnel, that were not being followed. So I think although it was messy and not pleasant to go through, I think it's very important to hold our leadership accountable. I hold myself accountable, to do my job. They are in very important roles that impact the education of thousands and thousands of children, and the employment of hundreds and hundreds of people. So that was absolutely the right move for the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
And then we go to the beginning. Siri?
So once again, I'm going to agree with Jackie, not because I'm the next person in line, but Jackie and anyone on the school committee, I feel like know better. That's why we elect, and that's why I'm running, for them to have the best insight, and to be able to help make those motions, and to make those decisions. So yes, I would definitely support them and say that they made the right decision, and we're moving forward. And it looks like they, you know, hired someone who will put Lowell in the right direction and be able to work together. And that's obviously what we want between the superintendent and the school board. Thank you.
Hillary?
I think that there were some process steps that were missed as part of the dismissal of Superintendent Calafawi, which I think is a problem. I think that there are processes, there are steps in place to ensure that people get treated fairly. And I think that there were some skipped in this case. That being said, I think we, right now, have a very unique opportunity with the new superintendent and the new administration that he has brought in with him. I think it's, it's an exciting time for Lowell schools. And I think that we should be working with our leadership in the schools' superintendents and principals to make progress. It's difficult to make progress with only, in only a few years. So sometimes that commitment needs to go a bit longer, and it takes strong relationships and strong collaboration between key partners, the school committee, the superintendent, city council, and other, other city leaders, in order to make a successful go of this. So, thank you.
Andrea, next?
Well, it's common knowledge that I was a supporter of the previous Dr. Calafawi. And I believe that the entire process was mishandled, in my opinion. I thought that if you were going to have issues, that it would have been, the professional way to deal with it would have been to have an executive session, where we sit down with the superintendent and say, "We have issues with this, 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 and this." And you have X amount of time to get it rectified, or that is cause for your release. And I don't believe that that process was followed. I think it was inappropriate for us to do that in public. We wouldn't do that with any other employee, I don't know why we chose to do it with the superintendent. So I do support our new administration. I think they are going to be doing a fabulous job, I'm very excited as well, with Dr. Boyd and his staff. Thank you.
And we ending with Michael?
Yeah, the superintendent issue is a tough one to have an opinion on. I don't, I think maybe the school committee can have an opinion on it, because they have a lot of the information, but a lot of information isn't out there. And I, what we need is consistency. I really would have liked to hire someone else before Dr. Calafawi. But I'm excited to work with this new superintendent. I think he seems like he means business, he's going to work hard, and I'm ready, I'm ready to support him, and I hope it's a long-term situation, because that consistency, it's too big a job to, to realize, or to do a good job in only a couple of years. So, looking forward to it.
That's for tonight, as the time is coming short. And in the next segments, we have six candidates. So stay tuned, we will be back in 15. Thank you, everyone, for participating tonight, and good luck on November 5th. And we look forward to work with you. And thank you, our panel's question, or all the questions you have for tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We'll be back.
Have you heard that Lowell is changing the way it elects its city council and school committee? And did you know that you can help decide what that change will be? In this short video, we'll give you information about what's happening, why it matters, and how you can get involved. Right now, all of Lowell's city council and school committee members are elected citywide. That means everyone in the city votes for all nine city councillors and all six school committee members, and the candidates who get the most votes across the city win.
Okay, so what's the problem with that?
The problem is that it can dilute the vote of communities of color. 51% of the voters can control 100% of the seats 100% of the time. Many people think that's why Lowell's elected officials haven't traditionally reflected the rich diversity of the whole city.
Wait, wasn't there a lawsuit about this?
Yes, that's why the city is changing its election system. Asian and Latino residents of Lowell sued the city, saying that the current way of electing the city council and school committee violates the Federal Voting Rights Act. The city settled that lawsuit by agreeing to change to a system that will be more fair for everyone.
So then, how's the new system going to be different?
Well, that's where you come in. The city is deciding now on the best election system to adopt. There are two options. Option one is ranked-choice voting. Option two is a district-based system. In November, Lowell's residents will get to vote on which system they like best.
Okay, so tell me about option one. What is ranked-choice voting?
Under ranked-choice voting, all candidates for both city council and school committee would still run citywide, but voters would rank candidates in order of preference. Voters would mark the candidates as first choice, second choice, third choice, and so on. Votes would then be counted in rounds, in a way that maximizes the effectiveness of every vote, to ensure that as many voters as possible will help elect a candidate they rank highly.
And what are the advantages of ranked-choice voting?
First, it solves the vote-dilution problem of the current system. Because it's not a winner-take-all system, a majority can't cancel out the vote of communities of color. Many people believe that ranked-choice voting leads to more proportional and inclusive results. A majority of voters can still elect a majority of seats, but smaller voting groups also get representation. For example, voters from the same neighborhood, or minority voting groups, can also elect a candidate of their choice if they all rank the same candidate highly. Also, there is no need to draw district lines.
Okay, that sounds good, but what's option two?
Option two is a district-based system, called the 8-3 hybrid system. Under this option, the city council would be expanded from nine to 11 seats. Eight of the seats would be district or neighborhood seats. That means the city would be divided up into eight districts. Each district would elect its own representative for city council. Two of those districts would be majority-minority, meaning the population in each of those two districts would be more than 50% Asian and Latino combined. Then there would be three at-large councillors, who'd be elected citywide. The school committee would be elected in a similar way.
So what are the advantages of the 8-3 hybrid system?
First, it would also solve the vote-dilution problem of the current system. With district or neighborhood elections that include some majority-minority districts, you don't run into the issue of a majority that can completely cancel out the vote of communities of color. Also, many people like district-based systems because they ensure local representation for neighborhoods within the city. It's also cheaper to run for office in just one district than citywide, so that may encourage more candidates to run.
Okay, that option sounds good too, but how do we know which option is better for Lowell?
Well, that's something you and everyone else in Lowell need to help decide. There are pros and cons to each election system. The important thing to remember is that Lowell is going to select one of these two options. Either will be a big improvement from the current election system, but it's up to you to help decide which is best.
So how's this decision going to be made, and how do I get involved?
It will be on the ballot in Lowell this November. You'll be able to say which option you like best. Once that vote is taken, the city council will decide which of the two options to adopt. So it's important for everyone to get out and vote.
Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 census. But what is the census? Simply put, the census is a headcount of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is, and always has been, a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals and healthcare clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the census online, by phone, or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agencies. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the future of our country.
Lay.
Okay. Is the school district doing enough to engage, support, and recognize our diverse student population through hiring, curriculum, and other initiatives?
You mean the student or the staff?
The question again, to be fair, is the school district doing enough to engage student, to engage, support, and recognize our diverse student population through hiring, curriculum, and other initiatives?
I think we have been talking about having diversity for a very long time, and it's not easy. It takes effort from school committee, as well as the superintendent and the city. And I believe that we have been working toward that, getting that done. And I am a proponent of doing that. And such as, recently, I made a motion to have, to have, to ask superintendent to engage the parents, to engage the parents and community to, with diverse background, as well as having a system, to have hiring Lowell residents to become teachers. So I hope that we, if we continue in that track, we will somehow get our, get closer to what we want. Thank you.
So may I interject that, because this question, an open question? So, and we have many existing school committee members that are in the floor with us. You may use 30-second response to whoever that gave the response, like you can go back and forth on the same question for this one. So next is Connie.
I think that it's certainly a goal that this committee and other committees have discussed and worked with administration to put in place. I don't think we're doing enough, and I think we need to always be pushing ourselves to ensure that all of our schools at every level are representing the community that we serve. And I think that there are some ways we've been successful in that. As Mr. Lay referenced, you know, we've had a long-time program, working with internal staff, specifically paraprofessionals, who are very representative of our community, and taking them through the education process so they can move towards teaching careers here in the city. I think that, again, in these last, you know, with the beginning of this school year, we've seen with our hiring, including principals and some of the other positions, a real effort to include a diverse background of candidates in final selections. And I think that, you know, we're certainly, we'll never be there, you're never done, but I do think that the work is really moving much more quickly now.
Giralt?
Thank you. You know, I'm proud to say that this superintendent, during the interview process, heard our concerns. concerns for diversity. And 75% of the administration and principals hired since July 1st have a diverse background. And for Lowell, I think that's quite an accomplishment. I mean, I'm 57 years old. For the first time in my lifetime, we actually see diversity in the central administration. We've funded some bilingual powers to come back. We're putting additional funds into translation services that Mr. Lay has been a champion for. All these things help with diversity. And I think this school committee and this administration is determined to try to improve and be more inclusive, and I hope we continue to do so.
Ben?
To answer to your question specifically, I, previously, I think this district has not done enough with diversity. I mean, it is good to pay lip service to these things. It's good to do, work the work, but we haven't really, it's good to talk the talk, but we really haven't done, worked the work. And it is our responsibility as a city, it is our responsibility as a district, it's our responsibility with our elected officials, to really go out and insist on diversity. I am glad that the current superintendent, with the first two hires he did, I am glad to an extent. This is what I have advocated for years, that we need a diversity staff, whose responsibility is to go out there and try to diverse our district. So we haven't done enough in the past. Diversity, we understand in science, is strength. We have not tapped into that strength. This city is diverse, and it is just wrong that we haven't tapped into that strength that is given to us by destiny.
James?
Hi. This superintendent is dedicated to diversity. He is probably the strongest proponent of diversity in the administrative office. I had the opportunity to interview him for another show, and his commitment to diversity is incredible. He actually knows how many languages are spoken in Lowell, and he's trying to make sure that each language can be somehow taken and used in Lowell. And I am very impressed with this superintendent when it comes to the matter, the question of diversity, because he's dedicated to it. And I would like to see the school committee support him as much as they possibly can.
Robert?
Yes. Diversity to me, we're not doing enough about it. I know what I did in Lowell. We, a lot of people ask, can you get me a job? What I did was pass a motion to make sure if you live in Lowell, you'll get a final interview. That's all I can do to anybody. I tell them I can get you a final interview. We got 100 custodians, and more than half of them don't live in Lowell. But to try to find educators that are Latino, or Puerto Rican, or Dominican, whatever you want to say the word, or Cambodian people, Camero people, they're not coming toward education. And I was called two years ago, a white supremacist, because I said, "Don't forget white guys." Now, I look at the Stark Loser School, they say it's an underperforming school. When I walked through that school, I loved that school. And I look in the classrooms, and there's a lot of white guys in them classrooms. So to me is diversity, I was hit by affirmative action. I was told I couldn't be promoted in the U.S. Army because I was white. And I'm 65 years old, I'm a different generation. Now I think we should be looking for the most qualified people. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I don't know what it is, is equity in diversity, that's what Bob is.
Ben, you'd like to respond to him?
Yes, that is my response. That is equity in diversity, not just diversity, but equity in diversity. So we have to go out there and get qualified candidates. And you see, the danger, when we talk about diversity, and this is an expert area, when we talk about diversity, the danger is for us to rush, to just hire somebody out there and then use it as a ploy down the road to say, hey, look, look at whom we hired, pays on diversity. He's not qualified, not doing the job. So moving forward, we go down, we go down the drain. We move one step forward, we then we use that as an excuse to go back three steps backwards. But equity in that diversity is what is important. So we have to do the work of going out there to seek qualified candidates, to make it worthwhile for everyone across the district.
Anyone else like to pick on that?
Yeah, I'd like to respond if I could. What I like about, what I like about diversity right now is Ben O'Para putting his name on the ballot. I think that helps us right there. Shows Lowell, if Lowell comes out and elects him, this is his third try, and I hope they do, I think Lowell will respond to diversity. That's the way we might have to respond to it.
I tend to agree with Bob. Having been on the ballot is a tremendous asset to the school committee base.
We done moving forward? Third question, I have Nancy Pina, and this question will go to Connie.
Thank you. In what ways, for instance, church, clubs, service organizations, have you been involved personally to serve the community?
Well, over the, I, my, that was my start, to be honest with you. I mean, my career has been in nonprofit organizations, and over and above, I volunteered with a number of nonprofit and cultural organizations for many, many years. It's honestly what inspired my involvement in the, in running for school committee and in continuing to serve, is seeing the incredible connection between what happens in our schools and how it really does impact the whole of our community. So I've, again, I currently work for a nonprofit agency, community teamwork, but in the past, I've worked in a number of different sectors, in arts and culture, small business development, childcare, workforce development, and all of them have really given me the experience. And I think the, the opportunity to learn and be able to bring all of that as a school committee member for these years that I've been lucky enough to serve on the school committee. It's a great way to get to know your city, for the record, too, for anyone. There's no better way to learn about Lowell and learn about your community than getting involved in all the different organizations that are here in the city.
Gerald?
I started very young. I was a, I was a minister of communion, I was a lecturer, I worked at the church rectory, I studied for the priesthood for a year. I've coached youth baseball, I've coached little league, I taught CCD for a number of years. I worked at PTO, both at St. Michael's and at the Robinson School. My wife and I restarted the PTO. So I've been involved. I also do a radio show on Saturday mornings on WCAP, and I've been known to write a blog every now and then also.
And I believe you're still doing it.
On, on school committee-related issues, I post things, yes.
Next, Ben.
Oh, well, I'm gonna stop.
To be fair, I wanna say Benjamin.
It doesn't matter, Ben, Benjamin, whatever. Where do I start? When I moved to Lowell in 1995 grad school, a year after, I was elected to the vestry of Seniors Church, beautiful stone church across the street here. I served on the vestry of Seniors for two years and soon became the warden, and I was served two terms as warden of that church at a very difficult time in that church when we did not have a clergyman. We had, just resigned. So I had to take it upon myself to replace clergy, traveled across the country, you know, in search of clergy, replace clergy, and that church is still on solid grounds as we speak today. Thereafter, I have done so many things, including serving on various boards. I was on the board of ministry at large, I was on the board of African Cultural Association. I thought I was gonna get in there for two years. I have been in that whole enterprise now for about 18 years. We do the largest African festival in the state of Massachusetts, and it is something that all of us in this city are very proud of. So many other things that I'm involved, I'm being told that my time is up, so I'll have to stop.
James?
Hi. I was very active as a child in Catholic types of fundraising and that type of thing. And I was a teacher at Notre Dame Academy for two years, three years. I was a principal at St. Thomas Accornish School in, in Derry, New Hampshire. And I have been very active as an altar server in my church. So I would have to say that most of my experience is with the church, and I have to deal with the fact that that's what I'm good at. And I, I still serve as an altar server in the church, and in fact, I'm going tomorrow morning after, if I have a moment to do that. So that's basically my activity.
Robert?
Thank you. That's a great question for me. I, I served a lot of, I did a lot for kids in baseball myself. I have an uncle, Bill Howie. I have another uncle, Dan Noel, up in the Highlands. I had role models that told me to go out there and try to help children. But after being a prison guard for 21 years, I said, "You know what? I'm not helping anybody here." I seen all these young Puerto Rican kids coming in, 17, 18 years old. I said, "I'm getting out of here," because most of them couldn't read either, they had a hard time reading. I said, "I'm gonna go run for school committee," and, because I might be able to help some kids to stay in school, and that's what I did. I ran for school committee, riding around on a bicycle, built for two with my daughter, passing out books, and this time, I'm doing something different, just going around, holding signs and talking about dyslexia and people having a problem with reading. So that's what I'm doing. I just think it's the most important thing you can do is get out and just talk to children, listen to them. And that's what I try to do on a daily basis, and I've been trying to do it for a long time.
I should have said too, that I was a soccer coach. For eight years.
Okay. We finish the question with Dominic.
Okay, thank you. There are so many things that I think I've done, but just for a few things that was on record, I used to be a camp counselor for an organization called National Conference of Christian and Jews. It was nothing to do with religion, but that's who sponsored the camp. I used to be a board, on board of director and treasurer for the Cambodian community of Massachusetts down in Boston when I lived there. They don't exist anymore. They used to have it in the, I think they ended sometime 2000, year 2000. And I currently in Lowell, I am an advocate for scholarships. I've been trying to, year after year, I've been raising money to give three scholarships to Lowell graduates, and I plan to do that again this year, so I wanna keep on, continue doing that. And my day job tend to be involving with the community also, so.
All right. We're gonna go to question number four. Gloria will, will ask this question, and I'll go start with Gerald.
Do you feel that high-stakes standardized tests like MCAS are essential to determine student achievement and should be used to determine high school graduation? Why or why not?
No. I'll give myself as an example. I was not a good, and still am not, a good book learner. I learn more by someone taking the time to show me, and then I pick it up and I can do it that way. I think that these type of tests are very limiting, limiting the students, puts too much pressure on them. You know, I've had four children who've all had to take the MCAS test, and I've seen the stress that that puts them under, and thankfully, they took after their mother, they were much better students than me. But I'm not a big fan of the, of the MCAS, of that kind of testing.
Ben?
Following with Jerry, I say no. I come from a system where testing is everything. And as a matter of fact, this afternoon, we, my graduating class of, we are graduated from, from the University of Nigeria, we have a very active forum, and this issue came up this afternoon in our forum, where we've been pointed on some of the ills of testing and some of our students, who we thought didn't do well in school. It's just that they didn't, they're not good test, no, they don't do well with testing. So my entry into this country, and I opened my eyes into the benefit of using testing as part of the whole mix and not just testing. So I really don't think that testing should be the, be all and end all. It's detrimental, actually, to the development of a child.
James?
I would say no. The reason I would say no is because it took them about 20 years to figure out that their correcting of the MCAS test was not consistent in, in all of its forms, and that the, the English part of the MCAS test was especially difficult to grade, because the people doing the grading were students from universities in Boston. And the students had different, a different outlook on, on what they were doing. So I don't think the MCAS test is a good, good test. I think that it's rife with problems, and I don't support it.
I think that, that MCAS is really only one measure, and I do think that we, it is incredibly important that for all of our students, that we're assessing them on a one-on-one basis, and that MCAS is only one small part of how we determine how they're moving through their, their education in any given year. We have a lot of different assessments that we use across the district, whether it's specific within curriculum or content areas, and sometimes it's, it's portfolio work. Teachers today really have a broad range of ways to be able to not just assess what a student has mastered, but to be able to see where they're challenged, to be able to see where they need more help, where they need a different kind of instruction or explanation. And I think, you know, MCAS is only one measure. Its greatest value, I think, really is in looking in the aggregate, looking at the whole district, because it's really, you know, it's a standardized test, that's really the only place it can give you, I think, the most valid information. But it is something that I think as part of an overall strategy, helps teachers, helps families, and helps the district. Wow, I get the bell.
So meanwhile, I'd like to interject, because the time is running short, apparently we're not gonna be able to finish all our questions, so let's finish with Dominic, and then...
I think it's good, Mr. Holey.
Yeah, I didn't get to answer that one. Well, I'm against testing.
Gerald and Dominic, and then we will do the closing remark. For each candidate's go two minutes each, and then we're closing the program.
So can I answer that question?
Uh, yes, now, yes.
All right, thank you. Two years ago, roughly, a couple of years ago, when Bob Gignac was on the school committee at that time, we had a vote about the new PACC test. I've never been for MCAS. I debated with Hillary Clark's daughter at a candidate night in the seniors, and a young girl, and she said to me, "I'm not for this new PACC test, because we're not up to snuff with the computers." I told her, I said, "Bob Gignac and myself are the only two that voted against PACC." That was a few years ago. I don't believe in high, high score testing. I don't believe in that. I think we just focus too much on testing, and we don't teach children, at the high school especially, I think we have too many children that need, you know, they need a trade, and they're gonna go out of that high school, and they're not gonna be ready for the world. We should teach them how to do a budget and how to do a checkbook. And thank you very much for the time.
Okay, I'll be fast. I'm not proponent of, I'm not fond of too many standardizing tests, but I, for that, but I think it is important for educators to use as a measure tools, measurement tools. What I don't like about it is that, you know, I hate to see teachers take their time from, from classroom time to teach kids how to take tests. And basically, you're pretty much trying to teach the kids how to take tests more than the content itself, and, and to use it as a graduating tools, I think, to make it a requirement for graduation. I'm reluctant to support that. Almost, thanks.
Okay. We have one more question to ask? Or we, so now, we're gonna do the closing remark. Each candidate has two minutes telling the audience why you're running, and then we close the program. Start with Bob.
Okay, thank you. You're about 15 days away to go out and vote for a new school committee. I think your school committee needs some change. We definitely need stability. I don't believe the school committee can be trusted with a new superintendent after the elections. It shows they have a history of getting rid of superintendents. I think if you listen to Ben O'Para talk about stability, I think it's one of the biggest issues in the city of Lowell. You need a school committee that can be trusted to let this superintendent... You need a school committee that can be trusted to let this superintendent do his job. I also think special education and dyslexia is a problem that we're not talking about at all, because it would take a lot of money to fix that problem. But it's a reading issue that I want to deal with until the time I get off the school committee. And I won't leave until I think something's been done on that issue. So, I am for supporting the superintendent, special education, safety for your children inside school and outside of schools, and then I want to advocate for as much money as I can get off our state senate and off our congresswoman. Thank you for your time. Consider Robert Joe Joseph Howie Jr., because there's three of us, November 5th on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Dominic Ley.
Thank you. I want to run for school committee, because it is important. And I, it has been a very wonderful first, and one in almost two years for me, and I hope that I have, I think I have presented, represent you, Lowell as a whole, well. And so, I want to take this time to thank all those people who voted for me and support me and doing the campaign for me, hosted my yard sign and contribute to my campaign. And, you know, I hope that you continue to support me, and those who have not been, who did not vote for me the last time, I hope that you take an opportunity to vote for me this time. And, you know, I, I think that, let's see what I forgot, but I, so, so November 5th, I want you to vote number four. I'm fourth from the top, Dominic Ley, for school committee. So, thank you, and I hope that you, if you don't vote for me now, if I'm not your number one choice, I hope that I'm your second choice. So, thank you.
Next, Connie.
Thank you very much. You know, first off, I do, I want to thank all the organizers tonight for all of the questions and for taking the time to give all of the candidates an opportunity to speak directly to voters in Lowell. I know we all appreciate that a great deal. Again, my name is Connie Martin. I've served for, completing my 20th year now on the Lowell School Committee. It's been my great honor to serve in this role. I have found it to be amazingly engaging and exciting and challenging. I hope that as we move forward in these next two years, we will continue to face challenges as they come. For myself, I always take the perspective that my role as a school committee member is to be well-informed, is to be available so that any constituent can be able to reach me to offer ideas or to give information about things that are happening in our schools. I think that's part of the role. And I think I have always kind of approached every decision that this committee has been called upon to make by doing my research, understanding the problems, and bringing a really in-depth and comprehensive understanding of our school district and our city as a whole to all of the decisions that, that the school committee has been charged with making. I'm looking forward to the next two years here for our Lowell Public Schools. I think we at the beginning of truly a new age of, with a new administration and a new energy and a whole host of new inspirations. I hope to be part of that team as we move forward, so that we know that our Lowell Public Schools are engaged with our community, are serving our community, and doing all that we can to ensure that our students get a great education and that our city is well positioned for the future. My name is Connie Martin, and I do respectfully ask for one of your votes on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Gerald Nutter?
Thank you. I'm very proud of my service the first two years, and I stand by my vote to replace an administration that had us in fiscal chaos with an unbalanced budget shortfall of over $2 million last year, and we owe the state $2 million in the food service account. I'm proud of the fact that by a 7-0 vote, we hired a new, young, dynamic superintendent, who, as I mentioned earlier, for the first time, has brought diversity to the central office here in the school system. I'm proud that I've been able to work and welcome in Project Learn and the Lowell Educational Justice Alliance, who I worked with to get a district-wide recess policy passed. I'm glad that we're looking at going to school-based budgeting and school-based fair student funding. We've had diversity for the first time, inclusion, fiscal accountability. We've advocated strongly for more money, not only from the state, but from the city as part of the net school spending requirements. It is our job to advocate for the students, and that's what I try to do. For the first time in a long time, we had 372 repair orders completed over the summer to fix the Lowell schools, something that we desperately need, maintenance and repairs. And I'd like to continue. I was a supporter of keeping the high school downtown. I look forward to that project beginning, and I look forward to being able to watch the money and the effects on the students. So, please, with all due respect, I ask you to consider re-electing me and using one of your six votes for me, Jerry Nutter, on November 5th. Thank you.
Benjamin O'Parrra?
Well, my name is Ben Upera. I am a, almost a 29-year, oh, sorry, 29-year resident of the city of Lowell. I live in this city with my lovely wife, who I know is sitting home watching. Valerie, if you're watching, you know you are my strength. You know you are the rock. You hold our family together for me while I'm running around like a chicken with head cut off, trying to get these votes here. With, we have our three kids, all of them, all of them went through the Lowell Public School System. They are the pride of this city. They are the pride of this community. It is my hope and aspiration to serve, to give back to this community, to give back to this city that has done so much for me. Yes, we live in this city. We are craving diversity. Yes, we may say that we want stability. Yes, we may say, say all the good things about the current administration, but it is almost, if you look at our track record, it's almost like an antithesis of what we have done. A school district that has an average of two and a half years lifespan for, for the superintendent, for the past, for the foreseeable future, that love and affection that we are showing the current superintendent might actually be just a Cinderella dance, because in the next few months, people will find fault with him. And there is a saying that a new horse will know how you treated, will see how you treated your previous horse, to know how they are gonna serve you if you're the owner. We need stability in our current district. We need to have, create that atmosphere of stability for anyone we hire. It is my pledge to you that if, and if you consider me for one of your votes, I will make sure, I will make sure, that I will not participate in the public lynching, which essentially was done to last superintendent here. I will make sure that we, we give equity, justice, and fairness to every staff of ours in everything that we do. That is my commitment to you, and I hope, and that you, I have earned your vote. Please consider me, I am number 10 from top on the ballot, or number two from bottom. Thank you, Ben Upera.
James Peter?
Okay. Education comes to me from lifetime experiences in Iowa and Massachusetts. I came here in 1969, and I was immersed in my father's efforts to turn the city's school department around. We are a family of educators. What do I want from the educational system? I want the school committee to give people the best education that they can. In 1959, 85% of our students go on to college. In 1959, that number was 20%, okay? And I have a few things that I rethink are truths, and kids come first. Teaching is a noble profession and is on the same par as a doctor or a nurse. Teachers have the energy to do well, but need the energies to do better. The most important part of a school committee's task is to influence curriculum. Contracts with anyone in the school structure are meant to be ironclad. This includes teachers, administrative staff, and superintendents. And the school committee should include people with commissar degrees and certifications. One other committee is, should be able to understand what the task is and who is to do it. We have a situation where some of us don't know what a line item budget is, and we need to know what a line item budget is in order to serve on the school committee. So, that's just one of, one of the many things that are lacking in the school committee process, and I would like to see some of those things fixed. So, I'm, Jim Peters, I'm number eight on the ballot, and I'm looking forward to hopefully serving you in the next two years. Thank you.
Our time has come to the end in tonight's debate. I'd like to thank you for your participation and our viewer for tuning in tonight. I'd like also to thank Wendy Blum, the executive director of LTC, for putting this together, the Lowell Sun and CMEA for partnering with the Camero Post USA. Wishing all the candidates good luck on the general election day, November 5th. Please don't forget to vote. I'm Soobin Pin. Good night.